I hear my call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Willmet Schools, District 39, for Monday, December 16th, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll? Here.
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 Principal Erin Dornbrow will introduce the Harper Student Council students to lead
the Pledge of Allegiance.
Beautiful.
Step forward. Right there.
All right, thank you. So today I have members of our student council. I've been so impressed by the work that they've been doing. Specifically, you're here about some of the work that they've already done, kind of in the spirit of right giving and in the holiday season and thinking of others. This group has really carried that on tremendously. So I'm going to turn it over to the students to talk a little bit more.
Hi, I am Grant. We are Harper Student Council members. Our student council is made up of third and fourth graders. We work together to lead events and drives for our school. Soon you will hear about some of the drives.
Hi, my name is Megan. As members of student council, we come early to school for meetings where we organize the different drives and events. We are all excited to be part of this fun club. I wanted to join student council because I wanted to get better at leading, at speaking in front of others, and helping other people.
Hi, I'm Georgia. Our first drive of the school year was the Thanksgiving food drive. Each grade had a different food item to bring in, such as canned vegetables, soup, or stuffing.
Hi, I'm Ally. All of the food was donated to connections for the homeless. It was a very successful drive, and we thank all those that donated.
Hi, I'm Shiv. Our second drive of the school year was the toy drive. First, we set up a giving tree in our lobby, where on the tree there were labels of different toys in which we could donate. Each student chose one label so they could try to bring in that toy.
Hi, my name is Matthew. All the toys were donated to the UIC Cranial Facial Center. This year, we donated over 250 toys, which is our record. We know the kids at the center will enjoy the toys, and we thank everyone that donated.
We look forward to organizing more drives and helping many others this school year. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, foundation under God, and the visual of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know I speak for the whole board when I say we're very proud of the work that you've done. These drives are excellent. Thank you. This month's artwork. Linda Pertz's High Crest students created the artwork in the boardroom. Fifth graders created surreal self-portraits and delicious-looking paintings in the style of Tibuti. I know I didn't pronounce that right. Sixth graders painted lush flowers in the style of Georgia O'Keeffe. I would like to remind everyone that this is a public meeting, and all are amongst neighbors and fellow residents. Appropriate conduct is expected from everyone. We ask that people speak only when called upon, and that everyone treat each other kindly, and with proper respect, and refrain from distracting behaviors such as loud conversations, cheering, clapping, or booing. Now we'll move on to approving the minutes. I seek a motion to approve the minutes of November 18th, 2019, Board of Education and Executive Session Meeting, and the December 2nd, 2019 Special Meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the November 18, 2019 Board of Education and the Executive Session Meetings, and the December 2nd, 2019 Special Meeting.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please indicate by saying yea.
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 The motion carries by general consent. Now we'll move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for the audience to address the board. Are there any audience members that would like to speak at this time? If so, please come forward to the podium. I must remind all guests to use the microphone, state your name, and community of residence, and by Board Directive, you are allowed three minutes, if it's your first time addressing the board, or one minute if you've already spoken.
All right, this thing's working. So my name's Frank Zaroski, Nutria News and resident of Willmet. I was, we're doing a piece on the school quiet room piece from the Chicago Tribune, a follow-up on that, and we read the report from District, from the Tribune, understood that District 39 was mentioned in the report as having 360 instances of using these quiet rooms, and we were just looking for ways to decrease the number of uses, and what a general statement would be for the paper that we're writing, because this is going to be going to print either this coming week or January 8th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, Dr. Krim Skolli will get back to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oh. No, please.
I'm Lauren Litchfield, resident of Willmet, with students at High Crest and Ramona. I just wanted to come up and thank you. I know that there's been some discussion regarding the facilities and playground equipment at all the schools. I know Ramona has put forth a packet for your review, so, you know, we're happy to answer any questions. We've been really hitting the pavement, trying to turn up every possible nickel, and we're super excited that we've raised $8,000, and we need $130,000. So we're, in all seriousness, I'm just here to say that the struggle is real. We are doing everything that we possibly can to raise money on our end, and we would love the support and love the discussion with the board to see what D-39 can do in partnership with all the schools with regards to our outdoor equipment. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
I just want to say thank you. I want to say that I'm thrilled to see the lineup for the parent education sessions this year. They came up really fast, and I just want to applaud Tony and the district for the first one that you did a couple weeks ago around technology and physical health. That was outstanding. I hope we see more of that. It was, I hope we can also mobilize more people to come, but I just wanted to say thanks. I really appreciate the spin on technology. It's a struggle we're all facing. How do we deal with technology and raising our kids? There's so many different facets of that topic, from what are they getting exposed to, to physical health. I mean, it's just a loaded topic, so thank you. And also, on the diversity and inclusion front, you know, with the whole school climate, I'm thrilled to see that ADL is coming this week, and I hope we'll see more parents, and I hope that we can work together as a community, school by school, to get people behind this. I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself. I'm Sarah Squires Doyle, Willmet resident, and we're at Ramona. And I also speak on the topic of just getting earlier intervention in the K through 4 schools around these topics. I think there's a lot we could do earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other people who'd like to come forward? Seeing none, we will move on to board reports. We have the Facility Development Committee. Ms. Sternwiler.
Pardon me. We had a busy committee of the whole meeting. The Facility Development Committee received updates on the progress of both the High Crest and Harper construction projects, and we're happy to report that both are on time and under budget at these phases of their constructions. This past week, several of us had the opportunity, along with Superintendent and Kelly Jackson, to tour the High Crest Learning Commons space just prior to the meeting, or Committee of the Whole Meeting. It was substantially completed at that time, and I'll speak for myself when I say how impressed I was. It's quite an amazing collaborative learning space. Permanent occupancy permits were issued Tuesday, and now the process of moving in all of the furniture, books, technology, and everything else has begun in preparation for its official grand opening in January, so we're very excited about that. Harper's on track for completion of its construction project in August of 2020. So Harper's on track for the start of the new year, the new school year next year. The board also briefly discussed the central renovation project, which is on track for design work, bidding, construction, and completion prior to the start of the new school year as well. In addition, the FDC discussed elementary playgrounds. The board discussed its interest in evaluating and updating playgrounds within the district. The board believes this evaluation should be part of a larger evaluation of all of our facility needs district-wide. This is different than how we've done it in the past, and possibly folding it into our strategic plan process, planning process. However, the board also recognizes that Ramona Playground may need a more timely solution and may potentially warrant an earlier replacement. The Ramona PTA is currently in the process of fundraising for this replacement, and the board requested that the administration review the plans and progress of this effort and return with ideas for how we might be, how we might support and/or supplement these efforts in light of this need. Administration will return to the board in February with additional information. Finally, the FDC discussed its recent special meeting with the Village of Willmet regarding the stormwater project that is being planned to begin in April 2020 in the community playfields behind High Crest Middle School. The board and the village enjoyed a very productive discussion at the board's special meeting. The village presented additional information, and the meeting provided a productive opportunity to discuss the many questions our board members and our administrative team submitted. The board recognizes the necessity and importance of this project to our community, as well as the need to work as good partners with our village. However, we also recognize our own responsibility to ensure the safe, uninterrupted operations of our full education program for our students. We reviewed the playfields project and timeline in depth, and discussed important needs, challenges, and issues, including student safety, access, contingency planning, communication, field access, safe routes to schools, educational impact, and ongoing planning efforts. The board must consider whether it would consider a temporary and permanent easement as described. The board indicated a willingness to do so provided the other concerns and issues related to the impact of the project can be fully addressed. Thus, the village is asking the board to consider approval of a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, to reflect its willingness to partner in this way. This MOU is recommended for approval later in this agenda. An intergovernmental agreement detailing the specifics of the easement, access, impact, and safety considerations will be negotiated and reviewed, with final approval considered by the board hopefully in February.
Next, we have school finance. Mr. Caesaretti.
Thank you. So at the Committee of the Whole, we discussed three things. We went over the five-year financial projections, the 2021 school year student fees, and then we discussed financial metrics and benchmarking. So with respect to the five-year financial projections, we also discussed the draft capital funding, spending timeline. These projections are presented later on in the agenda. The five-year financial projections were developed using Forecast 5 this year, which provide additional useful detail and metrics. The projections show the operating fund balance is projected to decline to just over 40% in FY '24 and '25. The fund balance is declining due to our planned investment in construction and capital projects. In FY '23, there's an uptick in the fund balance due to a $4.5 million debt service refunding, which is what we plan on doing. The District 39 has a goal of sustaining the overall end-of-fiscal year operating fund balance at a minimum level of 40%. If the operating fund balance percentage is projected to, if the is projected to rise above 65%, the board passed a resolution to consider, at a public meeting, options related to the fund balance. The SFC also reviewed and discussed the 2021 draft student fees, which are recommended for approval later on in the agenda. Instructional materials fees were discussed at greater length, including a consideration of the materials generally purchased through these funds. Instructional materials fees help to offset the costs of consumable materials used by students. Some examples of these annual consumable costs include classroom consumables, curriculum consumables, student technology costs, and subscription services. These instructional materials fees are not recommended to increase for the upcoming school year. The board discussed its philosophical considerations of these types of student fees and benchmarking that has been done in previous years to compare these fees to those collected by neighboring districts. District 39 tends to fall within the mid-range of comparable districts in this regard. Finally, we discussed financial metrics and benchmarking, along with identified peer groups for comparison purposes. The types of metrics and benchmarking data the district will use going forward in order to improve transparency and communicate our financial status in a meaningful way to our community members was also discussed. We are starting with a review of the various Forecast 5 metrics presented last fiscal year, and reviewing some additional metrics that are used as part of the ISB financial profile. We discussed which peer groups to use for benchmarking, and will continue to work with Forecast 5 to explore, drill down options for the district website. Thank you.
Thank you. Strategy in place of Mr. Steen, we're going to have Ms. Stone.
Yes. At the Committee of the Whole Meeting, the board discussed and considered the research and sample strategic plan information that was gathered and shared with the board. The board reflected upon the information it received, what it liked, what it did not like in the various strategic plan approaches and exemplars, and considered its desires for our future D-39 future efforts. The board agreed with the recommendation of administration to make a request of information from a wide range of consultants who might support the district in its future strategic planning efforts. This will be done in writing via a formal letter, and information will be broadly requested of a variety of firms commonly engaged in this type of work for school districts. Dr. Krim Skolli intends to send these requests out in early January, with submissions due by February 1st. The board considered how best to evaluate these submissions. Following some discussion, the board directed administration to review these proposals and recommended the Board of Education no fewer than two and no more than five firms to be invited for formal interviews. The board anticipates that interviews will be scheduled as early as late February, and will likely be conducted of a team comprised of representatives from the board, as well as our administrative team. The Strategic Committee also briefly discussed the Intergovernmental Agreement, or IGA, with Nutria for a data study. Nutria is examining its assessment practices as they relate to student placement and success of students within their leveling system. One of the primary purposes of this study is to determine if current assessments being accomplished in the elementary schools might provide sufficient, valid, and reliable predictability such that Nutria can eliminate a Nutria placement test. This is an idea and approach that each of our elementary districts advocate as an additional means for reducing testing time of our students and making the placement process more connected to our students' actual curricular and educational experiences. This IGA will assist Nutria in studying this, and it is being considered by each of the Nutria Township Elementary feeder districts.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to the liaison reports. The CRC, Ms. Katie Lee.
Yes. The Community Review Committee met on December 2nd to continue their work on this year's topic of strengthening partners between parents and schools. At this meeting, the work focused on drafting survey questions so that the committee can gather information on current practices of other districts, including the feeder schools of Nutria Township.
Thank you. Moving on to the Education Foundation. Ms. Stone.
Yes. The Ed Foundation met on December 11th here at the MECC. GRIP grant brag boards are up at the North Shore Community Bank, and I believe they're also in the hall, and they may be going up elsewhere. Trivia night is coming up on February 1st at St. Joe's, and tables go on sale on January The Lab 39 classes started last week, and 75 students are enrolled in eight classes, and I couldn't write fast enough to write down all the names, but they were really cool. And the next meeting is on Tuesday, which is different than their normal Wednesdays, Tuesday, January 14th here at the MECC.
Thank you very much. Illinois Association of School Boards, Ms. Sternwiler.
Does this work yet? We'll see how long. At the IIII Conference that was just held in November, ISB member school boards voted on resolutions, and school boards in Illinois voted against a proposed resolution, again, that would call for the Illinois Association of School Boards to support legislation that would allow school districts to set school safety and student protection policies, this is their language, protection policies that would allow trained armed school teachers and staff, in other words, that would allow armed teachers. We voted against it for the second year. A proposal on this topic was not adopted by ISB Delegate Assembly. The vote tally was 198 in favor of the adoption of the resolution, 249 against. District 39 voted against. The intent of the proposed resolution was to give local school districts the authority to decide what is best for their communities in the areas of school safety and student protection, and the resolution was supported primarily by rural school districts with concerns about emergency response time and lack of financial resources. Also deeply divided, a related resolution, one calling for ISB to advocate for state school safety grants for hiring school resource officers or school security personnels, was adopted, but also by a small margin. In addition to setting legislative priorities, ISB delegates elected their new board. And then, other resolution action, the Delegate Assembly approved a resolution that would support school districts considering social responsibility goals such as preferences for businesses owned by minorities, women, persons with disabilities, and veterans in contracting, approval of school safety recommendations regarding traffic zones, approval of support for centralization through regional offices of education, of background check processes for substitute teachers, approved two resolutions involving terms and seating of school board members, approved resolutions concerning the renewal of charter schools and requirements to service at-risk students, considered and adopted amendments to position statements on topics of the prevailing Wage Act, educational programs, charter school funding, and special education funding, reaffirmed existing positions on standardized test procedures and student assessments, in addition to other, a couple of other resolutions. So that is basically, in a nutshell, what happened at IIII, and there's nothing happening for another while yet. Again, I'll let you know.
Thank you for going and representing the district. Legislative update, Ms. Stone.
Yes. The General Assembly is currently in recess and returns on January 19th, 2020.
Now we'll move on to information items. Dr. Krim Skolli.
Thank you. I have several items to report on. First of all, the board, under written communication, the board received written communication from Eli Rogers regarding all District 39 kindergarten students having the opportunity to participate in a lottery to attend kindergarten enrichments at Harper in Central in the upcoming school year. I'll also share that the board did not receive any FOIA requests nor tax appeals in this past month to report. May I proceed? Thank you. Okay, so under our administrative announcements, we have a few things to share. First of all, as the FDC reported, the board held a special meeting with the Village of Willmet regarding the stormwater project in the community playfields. Again, I think that was a really productive meeting, and I appreciate the board's willingness to consider an IGA, and I know that the village does as well, for the easement that will likely be recommended to the board at the February meeting. In addition, just this past week, the district learned more specifics regarding a project that is anticipated to occur on Central Avenue, which would go essentially from Sheridan Road to Green Bay, and so that is a significant project scheduled to start this summer and go all the way through the next school year. The village is not requesting an easement or any kind of property needs in that regard, but there will be some really significant and substantial coordination required in order to ensure the safe and ongoing operations of Central School. So I appreciate our administrative team being there to meet with the village, to learn a little bit more about that, and the village's willingness to hear some of our concerns and coordinate with us to ensure the safe arrival and departure, which is really the most significant coordination that needs to happen. There's some summer programming that we also need to coordinate, and we've already reached out to the Park District regarding that. They do use some of our schools in the summertime, and so we've alerted the Park District to some of the projects that will be happening this summer, and look forward to coordinating with them as well. Later on this evening's agenda, the board will see a recommendation. Later on this evening's agenda, the board will see a recommendation for the MOU, the Memorandum of Understanding. This MOU really just recognizes the necessary partnership and collaboration required in order to ensure a safe, timely, and efficient stormwater project in the community playfields. Again, I want to acknowledge and appreciate the board put a ton of time into really carefully considering not only the project that is going to happen behind Highcrest Middle School, but also really considering so many of the other elements that may be impacting our schools as we consider the easements. In essence, for those who maybe weren't at the most recent meeting, that easement is being requested by the village in order to access the playfields, but the size and scope of the project that's occurring in the playfields also requires some careful consideration of our ongoing safe operations of our schools. So, again, acknowledgement to the board for their careful consideration of all of these aspects. Thank you to our administrative team and also to the village for really hearing and partnering with us to ensure those safe operations. So, again, later on tonight's agenda, the MOU really is conveying a sense of partnership and a willingness to work through the details of the IGA, and then in February, with all likelihood, we'll be recommending all the specifics wrapped into an intergovernmental agreement with the village to ensure, again, the ongoing operations of our school and then the easement that is necessary in order to limit the impact of the project to the greatest extent possible. Also, later on this evening's agenda is the intergovernmental agreement. I know the Strategy Committee discussed that briefly. That is an agreement with Nutria to support their data sharing study. We're supportive of that and look forward to the board hopefully approving that later this evening. Under kindergarten registration, I did want to alert the board as well as our community to our planning that has started for the 2020-21 school year. Kindergarten registration has been announced. We have registration happening with a pretty significant kickoff at all of our schools on January 13th and January 14th. January 13th includes an evening registration opportunity for families to come into all of our schools, complete the registration process with some support from our office staff. Staff will also be available on the day of Tuesday, January 14th, at all four of our elementary schools. For the 2020-21 school year, families of students enrolled at Central and Harper have the opportunity to enroll in the half-day academic kindergarten program. They may also choose to enroll in KEEP-39, the kindergarten enrichment program that is being offered, launched essentially, at Central and Harper in this upcoming school year. KEEP-39, as the board is well aware, is an optional fee-based half-day kindergarten enrichment program that's offered at our schools. It will complement the academic program that is offered in the morning, and we're really excited to get this off the ground in this coming year to evaluate that program and hopefully, provided it all goes well, to roll this off out in the next school year to both McKenzie and Ramona schools. In the meantime, in this upcoming school year, we are partnering really closely with the Park District to ensure that all students do have access to a kindergarten enrichment program if they so choose to enroll in one, and that we have open lines of communication to ensure the best experience for all of our students. All of our required enrollment forms are available on the elementary schools and on the district website as well, and parents are encouraged to print and complete those forms before coming to the home schools to register. But, again, there will be staff there ready to support parents. I do want to acknowledge and really just announce that we have our parent education series. I really appreciate the positive feedback we've received from our community so far. Postcards have gone out to all Willmet residents, really celebrating, announcing the upcoming dates for all of these events throughout the upcoming school year. We have these educational presentations planned to cover a variety of topics, including technology and also our culture and climate initiative, as well as several other special topics, and we really appreciate all of the support that we've had for these events. I do want to make a special mention of the wonderful opportunity that we're really excited about this Wednesday evening. We invite all families and residents to join us at WJHS at 7:30, specially designed to accept any families coming from the 5'8" chorus concert. You can walk right across the street and come join us at WJHS at 7:30. We are hosting an educational presentation on allyship in the face of hate for members of our school community, so please consider joining us as well as a team from the ADL for an engaging conversation about how to help our children promote allyship when confronting hate in our community. Yes, please.
I don't know if this has been remedied on the website yet, but some may have found. Has it been remedied already?
Yes, we got your feedback, and so I did adjust it so that we can say "community member." It was just one question.
Okay.
So now anyone and everyone could click on whether they have children in our district or not.
Okay. So to anyone who has gone on and thought that they had to have a child in school K through 8 and felt that they couldn't go because they didn't have a child, you can come, please. Just want to make sure that you knew that you could come.
We're really excited about this because it is meant to be a learning opportunity but also a really engaging conversation, which I think, as was referenced earlier, the technology event also was just a wonderful conversation, a back and forth of questions and really helpful topics covered. So thank you for that, Tony, and we look forward to this week's event on Wednesday. And to all those community members out there, as you receive those postcards, our hope is you're going to put them on your refrigerator and mark your calendars and come out to join us for those future events as well. So I covered many topics. I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Board members, any questions?
I had a quick one. On the education series, I've had the chance in the past to attend several of those, and they've always been really good, and opportunities for interaction with the audience members and the presenters is very good. But the attendance is never as big as I would like, and it sounds like you're working on that. Are you working with, like, the PTAs and the PTO to also have them facilitate more involvement?
Yes, thank you. Good question. In fact, at every meeting that I have with PTAs, I have mentioned this time and again and again. I meet with all the presidents of the PTAs as well as the small groups of PTAs representing each of our schools, and I have probably commented on this event in particular quite a few times. So we certainly are in there being very gracious and including those communications out in their blasts out to families as well. We do recognize this is a very busy week for our families, and so we've done our best to try and coordinate it at a time that will capture most people's availability, but 7:30 is an evening time as well, and so everyone's busy. So we do hope that as many as possible will join us, even if it's for a portion of the conversation. So thank you.
Ms. Sternweiler, ready?
My comment, I think, relates to Frank. So, we probably just covered this, but I've forgotten. Is there a reason we don't post this stuff on YouTube or anything like that?
The actual presentation?
Yeah, yeah.
So occasionally we do, and in this instance, in fact, we did talk about posting at least the presentation portion of it in our conversations about this. The actual engaging discussion, we're not sure that every participant there would want to be posted on YouTube or Facebook or whatever, but the presentation itself may be something that we can capture when they're presenting information. That may be something worth capturing, and so we do have some of our tech specialists looking at that opportunity for this event, and if not for this one, then certainly for some of our future ones, because I think you're right, families will log on and, at their leisure, maybe be able to access some of that information. Great suggestion. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, then we will move on to annual business. Dr. Krim Skolli.
Thank you. First up, we have our five-year financial projections. Annually, after the district's audit is presented, an updated five-year projection is prepared. The operating fund balance to expenditure ratio is projected to remain just above the minimum goal of 40% in the combined operating funds looking out through FY '25, and Ellen Crispino has this report for the board.
Thank you. The five-year projections use key economic indicators, historical actuals, and program changes to create projections of future revenues and expenditures. The projections reflect the district's commitment to fiscal responsibility while financing educational projects that support the academic, social, emotional, and physical well-being of each student. The district's five-year projections and assumptions were discussed in our School Finance Committee meeting in detail. First, I will review the assumptions related to the property tax revenue, which account for a majority of the district's revenue. Each year, property tax revenue is increased by CPI plus new construction. CPI is the Consumer Price Index and is published by the federal government as a measure per state school code of annual inflationary impact. CPI increases are based on Bloomberg estimates and range from 1.8% to 2.1% during the projection years. The 2019 tax extension is projected to generate 1.9% CPI plus new property growth. The second item is the new property growth, which is based on a 12-year historical average of $16 million. $1 million in new property growth is worth about $30,000 in additional revenue. For example, if new property growth were $8 million instead of $16 million, the district would lose approximately $240,000 of revenue for a given year. The third item for property tax revenue assumptions is levy collections, and those are projected at a 99% collection rate based on historical collections. Less estimates for property tax assessment appeals of $720,000 in fiscal year '21 and '22, and $756,000 in fiscal years '23, '24, and '25. Additional revenue assumptions include evidence-based funding, corporate personal property tax, replacement tax, and federal aid, and those all assume fiscal year '21 through '25 is flat with fiscal year '20. State mandated categorical grant assumptions include four payments for each year from the state. Interest income is budgeted at 1.5% of last fiscal year's fund balance. Local revenues in both the educational and transportation funds reflect the current student fee structure approved by the Board of Education. Kindergarten enrichment and enhancement revenue is based on approved fees of $6,460 per student, which covers annual program costs for staffing and supplies, a portion of one-time costs for curriculum materials and furniture, and a portion of the construction costs required to add the additional space to support the program. Fiscal year '21 assumes kindergarten enrichment at two elementary schools, and fiscal year '22 assumes at all four elementary schools with projected revenue of almost $1.7 million. Fiscal year '23 through '25 assumes slightly increased enrollment and revenue of $1,860,000 per year. This slide shows the fiscal year '20 operating budget revenue by source. The district's revenue is predominantly from local sources, and you can see 84% of the revenue comes from local property taxes. Now we'll take a look at the expenditure assumptions. First, certified salaries for fiscal year '21 are based on an increase of $1,000 plus 3.8%. The remaining year salary increases are still to be negotiated. Support salaries for fiscal years '21 through '25 are also to be negotiated, and administrative and exempt staff salaries are projected at CPI increases. Health insurance costs are estimated at 5% increase each year, and most purchased services and supplies are set to increase by 3% annually. The largest exception is the Operations and Maintenance Fund, where architect and engineering services and construction management fees are tied to forecasted construction projects. Special education tuition costs are budgeted also at an annual growth of 3% per year. In the Operations and Maintenance Fund, the model reflects the cost of planned capital projects as well as approved health, life, safety projects. Architectural design has started for anticipated projects in the summer of 2020, including renovations at Central Elementary School to support the kindergarten enrichment program and large space air conditioning for the cafeteria at Central. Design has also started for Phase 3 of the Highcrest Middle School renovations, which include converting the old LMC into classroom space and adding large space air conditioning to the Highcrest Auditorium. Projections include a large number of construction projects as shown on this slide. This includes projects at Ramona and McKenzie to support the kindergarten enrichment program as well as facility projects at all our school for health, life, safety, roofs, boilers, windows, as well as additional large space air conditioning. The capital project list is reviewed regularly at our board committee meetings, and construction projects must be submitted to the board for approval after bids are received prior to commencing construction. Kindergarten enrichment cost projections excluding construction are shown on this slide. Fiscal year '21 again assumes two schools and expenditures of $748,000, and fiscal year '22 ramps up with expenditures of $1.4 million at four schools. Fiscal year '22 includes some one-time costs, which is why it is slightly higher than fiscal years '23 through '25. This slide shows the fiscal year '20 operating budget expenditures by category. 79% of our operating expenditures are for salaries and benefits. This slide shows the fiscal year '20 operating budget, oh, sorry. This slide actually shows a trend of operating revenue and expenditures for the projection period excluding other sources and uses of funds. The surplus in direct revenue and expenditures is planned to fund capital improvement projects. And this chart shows the operating fund balance as a percentage of operating expenditures. It's declining to just above 40% in fiscal years '24 and '25. The district's goal is to sustain the overall end-of-year fiscal operating fund balance at a minimum of 40% to cover timing of cash flows and unknown items such as pension cost shifts or property tax freezes. The fund balance is declining due to our investment in construction and capital projects. In fiscal year '23, you'll see an uptick in the fund balance due to a projected $4.5 million of debt service issue and refunding. Are there any questions?
Board members? Ms. Benziker?
Yes. Thank you for the report, and as was mentioned earlier, we spent a lot of time on this during the Committee of the Whole, so I just wanted to reiterate a point rather than to have anything larger than that. The construction budget is a template. For budgetary purposes, it's not a fully approved budget, and I wanted to point that out in particular because the projected reserve levels, I think, start dropping off a little bit faster than I would feel comfortable with, but obviously they're projections, so revenues and other expenses, as we learn more over time, will impact that. But the construction template for fiscal year '21 has to be and has been fairly locked down because construction work needs to be locked in and bits need to be generated. For the future years, we are going to be looking at these in more detail as part of a long-term capital plan, so they're not locked in. So even though they're presented here as a template for planning purposes, not all these items have been locked in, and I wanted to just kind of remind everybody, including the school board, of that. Thank you.
Other board members?
I'll do the, "Thank you, Ellen. This is excellent. I know it's a ton of work." I think, maybe, I think we all know this, but it's always good to talk about, but our revenues are more or less tied to CPI increases, so whatever that is, 2% for a long time, but our expenses go up faster than that. So maybe if you talked a little bit about why we're projecting to have more revenue than expenses over time? Just make picture.
Well, it's just kind of where your starting point is, right? We start with our fiscal year '20 budget where we're at, and that for the revenue, the property tax is increasing by CPI, which is roughly between 1.9 and 2.1%. And then every year, the new construction will vary, but we've used the 12-year historical average, so ends up going up overall more than CPI due to new construction. And then, again, the salaries, we start with the budget, but then sometimes, you know, not sometimes, we do have retirees who are at the end of their contract, and they're typically replaced with teachers that are earlier in their career, so then we'll have salary savings, and so it doesn't just keep ramping up forever on salaries.
Yeah, I think that's helpful. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much. Excellent job. Move on to our discussion on student fees?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So in October, the board approved some select fees due to early registration deadlines. The rest of the student fees are submitted here for approval by the board with the exception of the lunch fees. of the lunch fees. Those will be submitted later, and the nutrition committee has made its recommendation. Again, this is a topic the board has spent quite a bit of time discussing, so we appreciate that feedback, and Ellen Crispino has a brief report.
Thank you. So the instructional material fees for next year are recommended to remain flat. However, as a matter of convenience for our families, as well as for efficiency of processing, we are recommending combining some of the small additional charges that have historically been assessed to families separately into this one-time fee. Combining these small charges into the instructional materials fee will reduce the number of times that parents have to go in and make these small dollar payments throughout the year, which can be frustrating. Instructional materials for kindergarten through sixth grade are increasing between $5 and $15 for the next year, and these include items such as magazines, assignment notebooks, and recorders for third-grade students. The seventh-grade instructional materials fee is increasing $35, which includes a lack and a uniform for physical education, which is shirts and short, shorts, as well as two predetermined books. The eighth-grade instructional materials fee is increasing $20 to cover the cost of two predetermined books. The seventh and eighth grade books are required to be purchased since the students annotate the books as part of instruction. Students also participate in book club units throughout the year, where students choose books with a partner. Students have the option to purchase these books, but many students choose to check their books out from the library. So since these types of books are optional, they have not been included in the instructional materials fee. And just to reiterate, we're not increasing the fees, we're simply combining fees that are already paid by parents during the year. While this change in process will reduce the number of times parents need to pay, there will still be some separate charges that will need to be paid during the school year, but as we move forward, the district will try to consolidate the fees as it makes sense in the future.
Board members? Questions?
Actually, do you have a question? I, maybe I didn't notice this before. Did it always say that this was, that the seventh-grade instructional fee was for shirts and shorts? Was that on the original description of this?
I believe so, when we talked about it at the committee of the whole.
I just didn't see that.
Yeah, I think that those were some separate fees charged previously, and now they're combined. Am I right?
Correct. Right now, the, we only included in the combination here items that parents are paying on an annual basis. We didn't include the optional items, and in fact, we even chose not to include some ide, items like skating, which I forgot, they do it either Highcrest or the junior high. It's not everybody does.
The only reason I'm asking is, I only recall us discuss, I hate to be picking you in about this, but since we specifically discussed, and I, and it makes total sense for me, to me, I'm not going against what we discussed and agreed on in terms of additional fees, that this was specifically to make it easier on parents for those, but the one thing, I hate to, I, I thought when we discussed it, that we, it was literally, you know, for those, like you said, for those things that all the parents in each of those grades like have to purchase, and the problem is with shirts and shorts, I don't recall seeing that, and I, I know that there is a lot of parents who have a lot of kids that go to school, and they keep the shirts and shorts from their other kids and reuse them. It's just, it's just a thought, so they wouldn't necessarily purchase them again and again, but it's just a thought, something I noticed. I didn't notice it before, though, so if it was in there already, then I'm not going to vote against it, I just, if it wasn't, I don't know if it was added, that's, the specifics of it.
I don't know that it was added, but I don't know that we fully got into all the details at the committee of the whole at that time, but that was part of the original presentation, but.
Yeah, it may not have been called attention to, so it's a fair point, that the plan right now is assuming that a pair of, a shirt and a pair of shorts would be issued to seventh grade students, they would then use that for two years. Some families do choose to purchase more for washing purposes or middle school, or, sorry, junior high kinds of needs. But certainly, yes, that at, at this point is an assumed purchase for seventh grade that then carries through eighth grade.
I know, and I understand also kids are different sizes and different, I get, I understand that.
Ms. Stone?
Yes. I've put a lot of thought and consideration into the matter, as I know everyone else has, and I want to be clear that the only student fee I have an issue with is the non-optional instructional fee. Regarding the instructional fee, with the exception of the gym locks, gym uniforms, books to be annotated, assignment notebooks, and recorders, I think that the bulk of what the instructional fees go to pay for pertains to the instruction that goes on in in the day-to-day running of our schools, that are part of what constitutes a public education in our public schools. Therefore, I believe these costs should be borne by the entire community of taxpayers and should be paid for with taxpayer dollars rather than by the families of individual students. Specifically, I'm talking about how the instructional fees currently cover the cost of copy paper, construction paper, craft supplies, STEM kit materials, workbooks, science materials, iPads in cases that do not belong to the students using them, but which are used extensively in grades five through eight as part of their education, and finally subscriptions to services including Seesaw, Encyclopedia Britannica, World Book, and ProQuest. Because I believe these things are part of the public education going on in our public schools, I believe the public should be paying for them. Therefore, I will be voting no on the agenda item to approve the 2020, 2021 student fees.
Other comments? Thoughts? Thank you. No?
I entirely respect your position, Ms. Stone. I think it's healthy to debate what, what the law means as far as a free public education, but I will be voting for the V, because I have done the math, and I'm not, I'm still want to think about how we would accept, I don't know, I think it's like $700,000 of additional expense, so, but I'm really glad you brought it up.
Other thoughts? Okay, then we will move on to long-term enrollment projections.
Thank you. This is an, I apologize, this is an annual report. Overall, District 39's long-term enrollment projections demonstrate stable enrollment, noting a 10-year peak in 2015. Since 2015, we have seen a very slight decline as larger classes move through our 5'8" campus, without including the impact of KEEP 39, which we do expect to have some impact on enrollment, though hard to predict at this point. We are projecting a slight decline through 2024. KEEP 39 is anticipated to have a positive enrollment impact overall, but without having firm registration numbers, we do not yet, we do not yet know what that impact will be. Tony DiMonte has this report for us.
Good evening. This is our annual report. Last year, when presented, we were projecting a slight decline in enrollment district-wide. This did occur by 20 students. Our projection last year of 3,457 students was very close with our actual total on September 30th at 3,465, which was eight more students than projected. The slides are the same, the slides on the screen are the same as in your board packet. The first slide shows the overall trend of district enrollment since 2008. We are down 146 students from 2008, which averages about 16 students per grade level. Since 2015, we had, we've had a 5.3% decline in student population. This graph shows the number of students living in rental properties. As you can see, although there was a small uptick in our K4 students who live in rental properties, overall, we have seen a declining trend of families that rent. Next, we look at annual home sales, and we can see that sales have been relatively consistent over the last six years, with a small dip in 2016, and with the average sale price consistent over the last five years. The next slide shows building permits for new residential construction. This, too, is stable. The blue bar indicates Willmet has been around the same number of permits this time of year in recent years. We keep an eye on kindergarten enrollment. As you know, we traditionally have fewer students enrolled in kindergarten compared to first grade, with the biggest contributing factor being we do not offer a full-day kindergarten program. We predict that next year's addition of our kindergarten enrichment and enhancement program, KEEP 39, at Central and Harper, will yield additional students. This may also impact other grade levels over time due to something called the introduction effect, where parents continue enrollment with us because their child is already familiar with their schools, develop friendships, and therefore stays. Whereas if the child started in a private school for kindergarten, they may have stayed there for those very same reasons. Next, we'll look at individual schools. Our K4 schools have slight to moderate reductions projected. Harper has a moderate decline. Ramona and McKenzie are relatively stable, and Central shows a moderate decline. At Highcrest Middle School and Willmet Junior High School, you'll see some peaks and valleys that represent bubbles that are moving through our campus. By 2024, the junior high dips a little while Highcrest remains about the same. Overall, we see a trend of a slight decline in enrollment by 2024 to the tune of 239 students. This projection does not include the additional students with the introduction of KEEP 39. The overall fewer students is not a cause for concern, as the reduction of these students spread out across our grades and sections will not be drastically felt. Are there any questions?
Board members? Go ahead, Mr. Benzeko.
Thank, thank you. I think we've talked before, this is one of the more important forecasts in terms of the health of our schools, obviously, how we teach students and all those, those things that we spend a lot of time on, but as we've seen in some other school districts, when these numbers fluctuate too much, it causes problems. The, the good news is that because of the way we have the middle school and the, and the junior high, we can aggregate our students there and absorb some fluctuations. In the, the grade schools, the, the numbers as presented here are not that significant, but it is the, the place that we have, it's the early warning place that we have to watch. There are some forecasts here, like Central, which, which has a fairly 15% decline, and in the past, we've run some issues with Harper having an increase that, that caused some capital projects. For the out-years, how are the projections made? I understand if you have a cave, you have kindergarten and some projections there, you can kind of extrapolate that, but, but how, how are the projections made for the out, three or four years of these?
Yeah, and, and remember, the KEEP 39 numbers are not included in this, so.
Right, I understand.
Okay, so we use a ser, a program and a service called Barriger. So it's a demographer service that does our demographic projections. They have analysts on staff, and they use statistics from Illinois Vital Statistics, as well as birth rates and from sources, and our student information data, they get yearly from us, they crunch that and give it back to us with a report that gives us those five-year projections. So this is a service that we subscribe to, and we can inject what's called local knowledge, so if we know, that's something they would not know, so if we knew that there was a new housing development of some kind, or something that they would not be aware of, we give that information to them, and that's how we derive at the, at this report.
Okay, and I, I think the numbers are, are fine, obviously. It's just, we really need to, to stay on top of these. There's, we, we're in a good spot, I mean, we have some margin for error here, but obviously, this is the, the projection thing that, that, that we always have to keep our eyes on, and I know you guys do.
Yeah, absolutely, we do, because it impacts everything from space to staffing to everything, so we, we do keep a very close eye on this. As you know, in Willmet and, and the particle interview that is served by us, there's no open land, there's no large developments that happen. What's happening is families are getting smaller, and I had a chance to speak with our, with Barriger, our service, just last week, actually, and that's a trend noted actually across the US, as the population ages and families are choosing to have fewer kids, and there's other pieces at play, but that's what's happening. When you look at the birth rates, the birth rates have, which is a five-year kind of forecast as to not including move-ins, just how that's going to happen, how, or what potentially it could be. Although it's somewhat stable, it is lessening, so that's a, that's a trend. So families, the reality is families are getting smaller is really what's happening.
Again, I think we're in a great spot, and the deltas are small, and we're watching it, it's just, this would be the place where we want to keep watching.
And you're right, and you're, you're spot-on with the 5'8" campus because of that grade-centered concept. We, we aren't adding new schools or having to adjust large things, economies of scale help us with that. At the elementaries, there, you're right, two schools have a slight, more decline than the others, but when you spread those kids out, though, across our sections, it's really not a, a large impact on us, and we're very fortunate to be in a stable area. There are some communities that are experiencing their large growth, and they're having to play with boundary lines, or actually, what's more common now is a lot fewer kids to where they're either closing schools, renting space, or, and we don't have that in a way that may have been nice, because it would have lessened the construction dollars and impact on that, but the reality is our population is stable, and projected to be stable at least through the next five years. And when I say stable, that you're right, the delta is, is hundreds in a district that has 3,565 students.
Thank you.
A quick question. So do we have, I can't remember what you called it, the stay factor, kind of?
The introduction effect?
Yes.
You know, it's a, it's, I was actually talking to the demographer last week, and, and that's a real thing that's noted, and something we probably never thought about. So because we never had that full-day K, the kids that have started in these private programs, now all of a sudden, they're familiar, they're a part of the culture, they're a part of the parent groups, the kids have built friendships, they're now staying there. And if those kids now start with us, it, again, it's not just a kindergarten impact, this could actually impact our enrollment going forward, so that is a real noted thing. Do we have that? I don't know, I mean, we look at things like mobility rates, I guess that's the closest thing you could maybe say is a stay factor. Our mobility rate is relatively low, as you know, families come here, have kids, they bring, they raise their families here all the way through Nutria, and then they, then they move, and the next crop comes in, and that's a pretty typical pattern, it's just that the new crop is having fewer kids.
But I just didn't know if there's a typical percentage increase that we could expect.
For the kindergarten?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. No, in fact, I, I hesitated to add that into our normal traditional reports here because it's so unknown. I would, I mean, we could look at the, the difference between first grade and kindergarten and see if we captured the same number of kindergarten kids as we would first grade, that is our possible predictive number, that's what we planned for, but as far as who's going to stay beyond that, no. And knowing how with parent events and how we connect with families, my hope is majority stay.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Follow-up question to your question. So do we know, like, how many, I think I might have seen this number, just how many kids that would be eligible to go to our schools live in Willmetts, and then we'd know how many, yeah, right, versus actually go to our schools, right, because they, a bunch of them go to private schools at this point.
Yeah, I don't think we have that specific figure, and I don't think the agency does either.
No, I don't think the demographer does either.
What, we would, to get that information, at least in my experience, we would have to request that information of the private schools, who may or may not be willing to share that information.
Sure.
So we don't have a really good sense of that, but it will be interesting, and I think Tony's prediction is, is going to, is, is a good one, in so much as we will capture a few more students in the kindergarten year instead of those who anticipate transitioning in first grade, and then that kind of will have a different effect on our enrollment moving forward. I've recognized that in other districts as well, so.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Board members? Thank you very much.
Next, we're going to move on to the draft school calendar.
Next, we're going to move on to the draft school calendar.
Yes, thank you. So, you will see as part of the agenda, the proposed draft calendar, as we do every year. This calendar aligns with the township for holiday schedules. There are no other significant departures from our practice. With the board's review and any input you may provide this evening, we would like to recommend the calendar, the 2020-21 calendar, for approval to the board at the January regular board meeting. We have received a bit of feedback, and I know that some have mentioned a request for the day after Halloween to be off. I will say that we've accomplished that this year, because Halloween falls on a Saturday. So, Halloween is off, and the day after Halloween is off. Kudos to those who developed the calendar to ensure that that would happen. That took a lot of work, and I'm happy to report that that is, in fact, the case. We will still have a half-day scheduled around then. It's actually on Friday, October 30th, and that half-day is used by our teachers to prepare for parent-teacher conferences and other kinds of parent conferences.
Can you do anything about the weather on Halloween? It was quite bad this year.
It was quite horrible this year, Frank. Thank you for mentioning that. And, you know, since we were able to work this calendar out, the sky is the limit around Halloween, so I will do my best to improve the weather for next year as well. It, you know, I mean, that bar is pretty, pretty low, so if it's better, you can commend me. I don't have any control over that, but.
Other thoughts on the calendar? Okay, then let's move on to our board policy review. Dr. Kama Scolit, it's still you.
It is, thank you, and Dr. Glouacki is going to chime in as well. Changes suggested at the October and November board meetings were considered, policies, and those policy revisions were made. Policy revisions also reflect updates from our model policies provided by the IASB Press Services. At the December committee of the whole meeting, the board discussed the use of pronouns and policies, and similar to the statement of inclusion and denouncement of actions of hate, board policies, according to the board, and, and we agree, should reflect these same principles. I am very pleased to share that Dr. Glouacki has been able to incorporate some of those, and I'd like to invite her to make a few comments about how she has changed some of the pronoun use in the policies.
Thank you. So, after our committee of the whole discussion earlier this month, I went back to the current policies that are presented tonight and simply replaced the pronouns and put the simple subjects back in. So, he or she is now referencing the student or the staff member, specific to who we were speaking, whom we were speaking about. So, hopefully, not only is it more sensitive, but it's also more clear in our written policies, and we'll do that going forward. Thank you.
Thank you for being so responsive so quickly. Does, does the board have any comments, concerns, questions about the policies? Ms. Sternwiler.
I just want to say, number one, thank you for all the very, 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 very hard work that you do, because I appreciate it, and I know we all do. I'm assuming, I'm just going to speak for everyone. And second of all, I just want to also thank everyone on the board for so, being so enthusiastic in embracing this change, because, and being leaders in this. It's, it was just, I think, a very important thing to do. It was the right thing to do. So, I just want to say thank you.
Others?
I concur. Ms. Sternwiler. With the board's direction, we will bring forward in January a statement. I know the board wishes to have an acknowledgement on the policy web page, the website, where all of our policies are listed. Because we can't simply make this pronoun change for all policies, we will bring forward a statement that the board can consider, and once approved by the board, we will have that policy, or, I'm sorry, that statement listed on that webpage, just acknowledging that we are moving toward this effort, but need to go through a regular review and policy adoption in order to accomplish all of the changes the board wishes to see within pronoun use in our policies. So, thank you.
Great. I do think that sends a strong message that we are a welcoming district, and it really is in alignment with our statement of inclusion. So, I think it's a lovely change. It is now opportu, another opportunity for the audience to address the board. Are there any audience members who'd like to speak at this time? If so, please come forward to the podium at this time. If not, we will continue with our agenda. It's now time for the consent agenda. The next order of business is the consent agenda under action items. Are there any items that the board would like pulled from the consent agenda? Okay, Mr. Panzic, please proceed with the motions.
I move to approve the personnel report dated December 16, 2019. I move to approve as the third and final reading of the Board of Education Policies, 5:120 Ethics and Conduct, 5:125 Personal Technology and Social Media Usage and Conduct, 5:130 Responsibilities Concerning Internal Information, 5:150 Personnel Records, 5:170 Copyright, 5:180 Americans with Disability Act, 5:185 Family Medical Leave, FMLA, 5:190 Use of District Electronic Networks and Technology Equipment, 5:195 Teacher Duties and Qualifications, 5:200 Terms and Conditions of Employment and Dismissal Teachers, 5:20 Harassment of Students Prohibited, and 7:180 Preventing Bullying and Other Aggressive Behaviors. I was corrected. The item on harassment of students prohibited is 7:20, not as I previously enumerated. Moving on, I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between November 19, 2019, and December 16, 2019, in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $347,839.10. O&amp;M Fund, $326,753.80. Debt Service, $723,671.25. Transportation Fund, $163,439.21. Capital Projects, $1,046,655. Tort Fund, $224,509. For a total, all funds of $2,832,867.36. I move to approve the manual checks issued between November 19, 2019, and December 16, 2019, in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $585,045.42. O&amp;M Fund, $3,017.34. Transportation Fund, $135.57. For a total, all funds of $588,198.33.
May I have a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. The ayes have it, motion carried. I need a motion to approve the 2020 and 2021 student fees.
I move to approve the fiscal year 2021 student fees as contained in the exhibit of the report.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes. The ayes have it, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the MOU with the Village of Willmet.
I move to approve the Memorandum of Understanding MOU with the Village of Willmet.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. The ayes have it, motion carried. I need a motion to approve the IGA with the new, with Nutria for the data-sharing study.
I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement, the IGA, with Nutria High School for data-sharing study.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. The ayes have it, motion carried. Conference items, do we have any old business? Ms. Panzic?
I'm never sure on some of these whether they're old business or new business, but when we just talked about the intergovernmental agreement with Nutria High School, it occurred to me that if we're shifting philosophy away from high-stake testing and specialized testing, or moving to collect data related to that, there's also testing that other schools, in particular Loyola, does. So, I think we should represent that part of our community, and I'm not sure how that would come into play, but Nutria will look at it from a, you know, students going to Nutria standpoint, and we should at least be aware that some percentage of our students don't go there, and, and whether this is neutral or has any impact on, on those students, we should represent them as part of our community.
Thank you. In fact, this is a request that is coming from Nutria, but a partnership we're happy to make with them. If Loyola wished to make something similar, we certainly would extend that same opportunity. Loyola's entrance exam is slightly different, and the purpose of it is slightly different than is the placement exam that the Nutria students take. And so, all students, because Nutria is a public high school, are welcomed into Nutria High School. The purpose of their placement exam is simply to place the students properly within their courses, or to the best of their ability, make those recommendations. In doing this study, they're hoping to have the potential to either better align their placement recommendations, or to possibly eliminate one element of additional testing, which can be stressful. Let me reiterate, though, there still will be high-stakes testing, and testing still will be done in order to help inform those placement decisions. It is simply an acknowledgement that kids are already being tested in so many ways on the same subject matter, maybe they don't need another test to tell them the same kinds of information. But it is a point well-taken, and certainly many of our students do attend Loyola and Regina and in other private schools as well, so, thank you.
Is there other old business? New business? Good and welfare?
I have a couple things.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, one is that I attended my first Triple I conference in November. I had a blast. Someone in my book group calls school board work "errand kind of fun," and that was true in spades. So, to quote the favorite word of the fourth graders that I work with, it was very satisfying to engage in discussion with people from other districts about our practices and their practices, and there were things I told them we were doing, and they were nodding, like, "Oh, the light bulbs are going off, we could do that, too." And then the other thing is that yesterday, I went to the 102nd Annual Winter Music Festival at Nutria, and if you've ever been to this, the musicianship is phenomenal. I mean, it is absolutely incredible. And I was, I was sitting there watching it, this is the second one I've been to, I was thinking, their music program is so strong because our music program is so strong, and these kids have come up through the ranks of the band and the orchestra and the chorus, and that we are, we should be proud of ourselves for having such a strong program.
Thank you. Is there more good and welfare?
I have an announcement to complement the musicianship of our Nutria students. We also have an amazing seventh and eighth-grade science Olympiad team. The varsity team participated in an invitational and placed fifth among 22 teams. So, congratulations to those outstanding students who represented us so well, and to Coach Val Moros for her support and guidance of that team as well.
Fabulous.
It is fabulous.
Other good and welfare? Great. Maybe we should start the meeting with good and welfare.
I think that's a fantastic idea. We could certainly do that with your direction.
May I seek a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss collective bargaining, special education, and personnel?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss collective bargaining, special education, and personnel.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carried, and we are now adjourned to executive session. The time is 8:24. Yep? Yep?